...in order to be considered for the online exhibit opening December. For more information, visit wgsac.wordpress.com.
The COVID-19 pandemic is still affecting communities of color harder than others in Los Angeles. MyCOVIDMD was among the first to bring testing to these communities, and they'll keep coming back as long as they are needed.
Today here at Creed Academy on Crenshaw and 60th, we are hosting our third antibody COVID-19 testing. So we've been doing this in partnership with Shared Harvest, an AMPR group. We have partnered with several churches and schools, this being our third one, and we're excited about it.
New Balance donated 400 pairs of shoes, and Jaden Smith donated his Just Water, about 50 cases of water to hand out.
MyCOVIDMD started on March 8th. We were the first out there in communities of color to get education around testing. We offer rapid antibody testing, but we also offer food distribution. We give out produce, we give out shoes. Not every test is made the same, whether it's swab testing or antibody testing. What we offer is the ability to check for the early antibody and the late antibody. That tells us a sense of where the COVID is existing and how the impact of the individual's immune system is to COVID.
In this experience, I have learned so much about the antibody test. I've learned so much more about it. I feel more educated, so that when I listen to the news, I can make some of my own decisions about it and what's right for myself, for my family.
We do everything for the community because we understand it's just, it's more than about testing, it's about building relationships, breaking down the walls and building trust.
With a troubled economy and unemployment at an all-time high, you might think this is the worst time to start a new business, but the LGBT Center in Hollywood sees opening their new Liberation Coffee House as a way of supporting their community. Here's their story.
So we're really excited to open Liberation Coffee House, which is actually a social enterprise. All of the profits that are raised from our funds go back to the life-saving programs here at the Los Angeles LGBT Center.
We've been donors to the LGBT Center for 10-plus years, and we've learned about the program where the youth are trained in culinary arts. And so we've been excited that this is finally opening, and since it just opened, we wanted to lend our support today.
So all of the graduates that you see behind you from our program, both our youth and our seniors, have finished our 300-hour culinary job training program, and now they're working here in Liberation Coffee House.
I just think it's wonderful. I, I need to get coffee anyways, but the fact that it's going to such a wonderful place, cause, organization, I, I think it makes everything even more delicious.
Los Angeles LGBT Center is the world's largest nonprofit focused to helping LGBT people. There was a big discussion about whether or not we should open, and what we felt was really important is that we're providing nutritious, affordable meals to the community. And we thought, even during a pandemic, people still need to eat, and so we're hoping that this can shine a bright light on people as we're going through this.
And a friend of mine told me about it, so I just found out about it yesterday. So I thought I'd come down and help the center out.
Places like this help the people that need help most in the community. And if we all work together, if my coffee money goes to help people that are in serious need, then that kind of all goes hand in hand, and it becomes even more of a community.
It's just a wonderful extension of the community. We live in the neighborhood, it's nice to be able to have a neighborhood coffee shop that reflects back to the community.
When the center originally opened, almost 50, over 50 years ago now, as a lot of members started coming to the center, there was a realization that people didn't have anywhere to live. So the center opened what were called liberation houses, which is where for about $1.25 a night, members could have a place to sleep. And so when we were pulling images for our 50th anniversary, we hung the wonderful photo behind you that marks the liberation house. And so when we opened the coffee shop, what a better way to celebrate liberation for a new generation.
It truly is a time of compassion. As we mentioned earlier, Angelenos continue to open their hearts and their wallets to help fellow residents through this tough economic time. The nonprofit Big Sunday has restructured its annual back-to-school event to comply with social distancing, and the Royal Seco Neighborhood Council joins Team Sadio in Council District One to hand out free meals to its community.
Well, this is Big Sunday. We are filling up backpacks for kids going back to school.
We're a community-building organization. We connect people through helping. And what we're doing today is every year we have our annual back-to-school drive, filling backpacks for kids going back to school. And we usually have hundreds of people here, and it's on a weeknight, and we all have dinner together. Obviously, we can't do that this year. So what we've done is because we've broken it into 12 different small sessions of people filling backpacks.
So I'm here today to pick up backpacks for our school-aged children that are turning to school remotely next week. It's actually essential that the kids also have the backpacks. That helps with their, their mental health and still inspiring them to learn, even though they will be starting learning from home.
Kids need the structure of knowing that they have the supplies they need, and also that folks care about them to want to put the bags together. We see the world not as haves and half-nones. We see the world as haves and half-mores. Everyone has some way that they can help somebody else. We have homeless people who help us as volunteers. We have CEOs and movie stars, and everyone's treated and valued the same.
They help people help other people, and, and they're just great. They help many other organizations, there's always a project.
We've been busier than ever, from everything, from phone trees, calling people, to providing meals for frontline workers at hospitals. We started a program called Put the Bill, where we're helping people pay their bills, and gas, electric, rent, credit card, and people have gotten in touch with us. They can look it up online at bigsunday.org. We're here all the time trying to bring people together, showing that we're all in this together. Everyone's saying that, now we've been saying it for years. You can see it on the front of our building, and we mean it and we live it.
Many workers in the fast-food industry are facing a tough decision. Just like all workers in the service industry, still being employed can also mean working in an environment where not everyone feels safe or protected from the coronavirus. Recently, the organization The Fight for 15 were instrumental in helping a handful of such workers get their concerns heard.
My name is Mashika Rankia, and I'm a Crowls Jr. worker and a leader in the Fight for 15 and a union. My family is a family of essential workers, including my sister, a nurse, who has also been on the front lines treating patients. Recently, my sister tested positive for COVID-19, and so did her five-year-old daughter. I told my boss at Crowls Jr. that I needed to quarantine until I got my test results. They had the nerve to tell me I should come in if I wasn't experiencing symptoms. This is a problem, not just in my store, but across the fast-food industry in Los Angeles County.
Before, you know, we were just burger flippers who should get a better job, go to college, but now we're the ones out there risking and keeping, you know, this economy flowing, and we're still getting paid the same poverty wages.
Everybody has the right to protect themselves, and everybody has the right to protect their family. Provide us with, with masks and gloves and not make us pay for them. Make sure that they're able to quarantine with their family, just in case they get sick, so that they don't infect everybody else. Protect us every day at work, and just make sure that we're not taking anything home to our family. You're not alone, like, we're all in this together.
All right, let's confess. How many of you miss going to the movies as much as I do? Well, good news. Recently, there has been a rash of clever entrepreneurs who are taking the movies old school. If you're on the West Side, you cannot beat the cuisine and creative thinking of Ayara Thai.
This is day three of our Thai drive-in movie series. We're showing Thai movies in our parking lot, paired with chef-curated snacks and food.
We wanted to have an activity for people to still be able to enjoy going outside and still think of Thailand, because we're the National Tourism Board, and people obviously aren't traveling to Thailand right now. And the response has actually been really great, especially being foreign films, you know, the concept of like, you know, would someone want to come out and watch a Thai movie?
I love this restaurant. Ayara is one of my favorite Thai places here in Los Angeles, and I think kind of like dinner in a movie is a great idea.
We're saying we want this to be a fun, but really safe activity for everyone. Everyone remains in their cars, and they pull in, check in, get their snack kit, and get to their spot on the parking lot. Once they're on their lot, they will get, serve their food, and they are given a phone number to text and add on any food throughout the movie. And we have runners to run it to their, their cars.
It's great that they're doing it all in the car, and it's completely social distance, and it's a great way to kind of get people together. So this is great, they're doing a really good job.
I think the community, Los Angelenos, are craving experiences that we used to have, but just adjusted for the new norm.
Well, I think this is the new reality that we live in, right? I mean, given the current restrictions, I think it's an excellent idea. It's a way to bring people in a safe environment. They, they feel comfortable, they don't have to, you know, be in close contact, I guess.
I believe that people feel safe enough to come out and, and enjoy themselves.
I feel like drive-in is kind of like the safest thing that you could do, being contained in your own car, everyone's wearing face masks, and it's a great way to support a local business.
We're also here to support the Thai elephants in Thailand, because they've been obviously hit very hard by tourism and the lack of tourism in Thailand, and so this is going to aid them. Our proceeds from the ticket sales will go to the Thai Elephant Association.
Los Angeles has the biggest community of Thais outside of Thailand, and we love to bring something that brings a community together, but also something that will showcase more of our culture within Los Angeles.
We really just want to have a great time. It's, it's really nice to be able to see people come out, even during this time, and there's a sense of excitement. I think like everyone is just really eager to experience something new.
That looks like so much fun. Drive-ins are making a comeback in a big way, and I'm not complaining. We'll be bringing you news of more movie events in the coming weeks. Check out Keep Your Distance, a socially-distanced comedy show. The Lamert Park Jazz Festival goes online, and the Griffith Park Free Shakespeare Festival presents a living room edition. Can't wait for that one. All this next on Virtual Things to Do.
Check out Keep Your Distance, a live, one-night-only, online comedy show experience, featuring Kev On Stage. Other featured comedians include Tony Baker, comedian CP, Precious Hall, T Murph, Ryan Davis, and Big Irish J. Join the party live as comedian Kev On Stage hosts his hilarious friends in their virtual return to the stage for this socially-distanced stand-up comedy event. Keep Your Distance is set to roll out Friday, August 28th, beginning at 7:00 p.m. For more details and ticket information, visit their listing on Eventbrite. The Lamert Jazz Festival celebrates jazz, community, and the cultural heritage of Lamert Park. What began as a block party known as the Satchel Avenue Summer Soiree, this summer event has blossomed into a full-blown music festival. Enjoy artists like Dwight Tribble and Munyungo Jackson's Jungle Jazz Quartet. The event is free, diverse, and family-friendly. Meet up with community on Facebook Live, Saturday, August 29th, at 12 noon for the enormous summer event that COVID can't stop. RSVP now for the chance to win official festival merchandise. Don't miss Lamert Park Jazz Festival. To learn more, visit lamertjazzfestival.com. Independent Shakespeare Company presents Griffith Park Free Shakespeare Festival Living Room Edition. Events will be happening all through August. The festival culminates in September with an all-new hybrid production of Romeo and Juliet, using movie-making, animation, social media, and the beloved ISC Stage in Atwater. Front and center of this new production is the Shakespearean acting of the ISC Ensemble. All events are online, free, and open to all. Register to attend each event and receive information about how to access the programming online. Special community-building add-ons and interactive elements. Don't miss the ISC production of Romeo and Juliet, brought to you by the Griffith Park Free Shakespeare Festival Living Room Edition. Learn more by visitingiscla.org/summer-festival. And that's a look at some virtual things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Rasha Goell. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us, and a reminder that you can catch us online at elacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more LA This Week.
Good morning and welcome to your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, August 25th, 2020. I'm Joe Buscagno, President of Pro Tem of the City Council. In council chambers are essential staff only as permitted under the Governor's Executive Order of March 17th, and all other council members are teleconferencing from remote locations. Also consistent with the Governor's order, all public comment will be taken telephonically. I'll announce a recess if we do have technical problems and lose a form of members. We also call a brief recess if we feel we need a break. So, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Blumenfield?
Blumenfield, present.
Bonin?
Bonin, present.
Buscagno?
Present.
Sadio?
Sadio, presente.
Harris Dawson?
Present.
Corretts?
Present.
Kirkorian?
Here.
Lee?
Present.
Martinez?
Present.
Price? Rodriguez? Rue?
Present.
Wesson?
Here.
Twelve members in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes of August 19th.
Councilmember Harris Dawson moves. Councilmember Wesson seconds next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Blumenfield moves. Councilmember Lee seconds next.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
Thank you. Please rise for the flag salute. I'll ask Councilmember Bonin if he can please join us in the flag salute.
If everybody could please place your hand over your heart and repeat after me or join me. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. I'd like to direct your attention to today's agenda. Madam Clerk, let's run through the agenda now.
Mr. President, would council like all items to go forth with today?
Without objection. That'll be the order. Next?
There is a request from the Department of Building and Safety. Continue item 1A for 30 days to September 23.
Without objection. That will be the order. Next?
Items 1 through 9 are items noticed for public hearing. Items 10 through 19 are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 20 through 35 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, members, those items are now before us. Members of clerk will go through the roll call and see if any virtual hands are up for any amending motions. Mr. Press?
Thank you, Mr. President. Would like to call 26 a special, please.
Mr. Corretts, your hands up.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to call 27 special for a short technical amendment.
Would you like to read that amendment into the record now?
Yes. I'd like to change the deadline date for the report from September 9th, 2020 to September 30th, 2020.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. O'Farrell? Are you done, Mr. Corretts? Anything else? You good?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. O'Farrell?
Yes, thanks, Mr. President. Item 28 special for remarks, please. Thank you. Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one item, item number 20. I'd like to call special for the purposes of an amendment, which I'm prepared to read into the record right now.
Please do.
Item number 20, be amended to adopt the recommendations in ordinance contained in the revised DCP report. Ordinance dated August 24th, 2020, attached to the file, which deletes condition of approval number 17, thereby allowing temporary signs which are permitted under the Broadway Sign District Ordinance Number 184055, but preserves all other conditions recommended by the DCP.
I'll second that. Any others, Mr. Harris Dawson? Okay, thank you. Mr. Sadio?
Item 15, sir.
For comments or an amendment?
Item 15 for special.
Okay. Just to speak on, correct?
Correct.
Thank you for comments. Okay. Mr. Corretts, your virtual hands back up.
Yes, I'd also like to call item 30 special for comments.
Very good. We'll hold 30 on the desk. Okay, Madam Clerk, what's before us?
At this time, council can move forward to public comment unless you'd like to vote on the items for which public comment was already held in committee.
It looks like we, let's do that since we have at least 12 members. So with that, let's take those items for a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. And for the record, those are items 10 through 14 and 16 through 19.
Thank you, member. These items are now before us. Go on with the roll, please.
Councilmember Blumenfield?
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin?
Bonin, aye.
Buscagno?
Aye.
Sadio?
Aye.
Harris Dawson? Corretts?
Aye.
Kirkorian?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Martinez? O'Farrell?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Rodriguez? Rue?
Aye.
Wesson?
Wesson, aye.
12 ayes. These items are adopted.
Fantastic. Thank you, Madam Clerk. With that, members, move on to public comment. Madam Clerk, would you please read out the call in information that was also provided on the agenda?
Thank you. Members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466 and then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star 9 to request to speak. And again, call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466 and then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star 9 to request to speak.
Okay, with that, my doctor, hello? Mr. City Attorney, would you please explain the speaking rules to members of the public calling in to speak?
President, thank you, Mr. President. To members of the public calling in, when it is your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak on. You have one minute per item to speak, up to three minutes total, and if you wish, one minute for general public comment. Please speak on the items first before providing general public comment. We will tell you when your time's up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you're not speaking on topic, or if we can't tell whether you're speaking on an agenda item, you will get one brief warning from me or the President. If you do not immediately get clearly on topic or again stray off-topic, the President will cut you off and you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time and will move on to the next speaker. We will take 40 minutes total of public comment. Finally, for members of the public calling in to speak, as soon as you hear someone address you, you are live in the council meeting. If you were also listening to the council meeting on your computer, channel 35, or other device, please turn down the volume on those devices immediately. There's a time delay between the live meeting and the broadcast, and it will cause confusion if you continue to listen on those other devices. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. So with that, let's start with our first public speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Sylvester Annie, and I'd like to make a public comment.
Great. You have one minute. Please go ahead.
Okay. So we obviously, we have a lot of issues that are going on in this country right now, and I love the conversations that we're having about attacking, reimagining public safety, but I feel like what we're missing is we're missing the root of the issues. Dr. King said that when you rise to the level of love of its great beauty and power, you seek to only defeat evil systems. Individuals who happen to be caught up in that system you love, but you seek to defeat the system. Currently, the 13th Amendment still legalizes slavery, and we're not talking about it. And it's the root of the mass incarceration that we have. It's the root of our community being impoverished and over-criminalized. And until we address that issue, we can keep on, you know, chasing little fire after little fire, but then I'd like to hear a commitment. I know you don't have the power to do it, but a commitment to publicly stand on, you know, on amending the 13th Amendment because it says that neither slavery nor indentured servitude shall exist within the United States except as punishment as a crime. And it's been that loophole in Jim Crow and black codes that we've been having issues.
Thank you very much, Speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name's Alicia. I'm speaking on the item number 14 and 30.
So you have two minutes for the items. Please go ahead.
Sure. So again, my name's Alicia Chan. I'm the Executive Director of Fair Trade LA. It's a nonprofit and a grassroots organization that's been working on making Los Angeles a fair trade city for many years. I'm very excited that the fair trade resolution and the motion is on the agenda today, and if it passes today, it will officially make Los Angeles the largest fair trade city in America. Currently, Chicago holds that title, and second is Houston. So fair trade is a national and international movement to ensure that what we buy to eat and wear are made with no child labor. Producers and farmers are paid with a fair wage while working in safe conditions. Essentially, fair trade is one of the solutions to ending human trafficking, especially labor trafficking in developing countries. And Los Angeles is a city, obviously, with huge purchasing power and a city with international influence, and the impact of our purchase has a ripple effect across the nations. And currently, local universities such as UCLA has already become a fair trade university. And today, I would like to ask all the City Council members of Los Angeles to consider passing our resolution to make Los Angeles a fair trade city and make us the largest in America. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yes, it's Eric Previn, and I'm going to speak on all the available items and the general public comment.
You have three minutes for the items and one for general public comment.
I beg your pardon?
You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
Okay, I appreciate that, Paul Bo. Thank you for your service. So the first one I'll talk about is the lien. There's only one lien on today's agenda, which is from Councilmember Kirkorian and CD2. And it's a, 12, it's a newish lien, but for some reason, it was continued from August 11th. So this is a little bit of a red flag because what council members try to do, first of all, they shouldn't be, in a pandemic, attaching liens to people's property often because other neighbors are in dispute with them about things that ultimately comes down to a Los Angeles Business and Safety Department, whatever they call it, the Building and Safety Department, coming out and making a often harsh ruling. What we should be doing, of course, is encouraging people to take care of the issues without fixing life-changing liens against them. You've heard about this for a long time. You tried to move it up into committee where it would be a little more palatable because no one's around, but now they're back and it's very bad. Regarding the item number two, which is your lighting district, you have a whole flotilla of lighting districts that you're rolling down the river, which are confusing to people. I would like to say that it was the brave number four, which found a majority protest exists in street lighting maintenance assessment. And I took a moment to look at how many people were involved and how the vote went down. There were three people involved, if you would like to know, and all of them are kind of strange trusts or LLCs, and two against one has caused this not to go forward. This is in O'Farrell's district. Lighting districts are confusing because people do get assessed for them and have to pay, and yet they're very often unaware of how that process comes down because of the incredible focus on, we're rolling out new lights, and who knows who's getting paid to do that work. I would like to then segue to some of the other items, like, for example, we have a great warm feeling about the 100th anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment. Thanks. We have, we're establishing Juneteenth as a legal holiday. Thanks. And yet here we have the Blue LA Electric Vehicle Car Project, which is, you know, we're applying for a grant for up to $16 million to do this. I just want to circle back on what a kind of lumpy rollout we had when LAPD orders all those BMWs, which are electric, which were then never properly put to use and, you know, wound up being kind of boondoggle cars.
Okay. Mr. Previn, please move on to your general public comment now.
Yeah, sure. My general public comment has to be about, A, you know, I hope Councilmember Martinez is okay. She's not here. We have to endure Buscagno at the helm. That's fine. But we can't really go forward without having our committee meeting and the Friday council meeting reinstalled. By doing what you're doing, yesterday at Budget and Finance, there were over 30, approximately 30 items. It's not tenable to comment on 30 items in two minutes. Now, you obviously don't want to hear from people who might be interested in updating you about why the endless supply of retaliation lawsuits is not in the public's interest and that currying favor with attorneys who then, you know, in an almost compromised way, sit on these cases for years, getting paid, when in fact, the disposition of the case is critical to improving public policy that's underlying it. So this is just appalling, and I want to call it out loudly and...
Thank you, Mr. Previn.
Because you need to get back on schedule.
Thank you.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yes, I'd like to speak on all available items and general public comment, too, please.
Absolutely. So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for your general public comment. Please begin.
Okay, thank you very much. Good morning and good morning to the public in LA. It's a wonder why anybody is still alive in this city, this criminal city council. Number one, I agree totally with Mr. Previn, these liens on people's, people put on people's properties. Item number one, 11343 West Moore Park Street. This should not be happening to people. They can't afford liens. People can't afford the rent. A lot of these things are surface abatement issues, criminally insane, corrupt. Herb Wesson put a $16,000 lien, no, was it $26,000 lien, on some person's property last week. Dog-faced, criminally corrupt, king of homelessness, Herb Wesson. That's what we have. Turning the city, these liens, et cetera, these policies of the city council are turning our city into a homeless encampment, the entire thing. Instead of putting liens on people's property, at least you could give money to the people. Instead, you took that $1.2 billion and you stole all of it. You gave it away to the developers. Use the money for abating these properties and putting people in homes. You criminal, criminally corrupt Los Angeles City Council, turning our city into a homeless encampment. You don't even mention the homeless anymore. It's growing exponentially.
So can we get on the items, Mr. Moses? You can talk about that in your general, if you want to.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
The assessments of these maintenance projects, the same lighting district, same thing. Item 15, some pilot program for water conservation, for laundromats. These washers are already energy efficient, all of them. This is just another opportunity for Sadio, who's over there drunk, and Rodriguez to get their name, get their face on the camera, and talk about something when the homeless are growing, homeless people are growing exponentially. You know you're going to just vote trade. Public, look up vote trading, vote trading, the city of Los Angeles. This is the heart of the corruption here.
So please go on to your general public comment, Mr. Moses.
30 minutes to speak is criminal. Item number 20, this is Huizar. This is a Huizar project, a 56-story building. All Jose criminal Huizar projects should be on hold. Of course, sleazy Dawson is putting it up for vote, and you're all going to vote for it, of course. Am I in my public comment, please?
You're already on it. You have 25 seconds left.
Thank you, sir. A message for Dawson. Dawson, you screwed Karen Bass real good out of her position. All those letters to the FBI with her name on it, your name on it, Wesson's name on it, and copies to Biden's campaign office could not have done her any good. All over a dollar a year.
Thank you, Mr. Moses.
Your state...
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
And I'd also like to make a public comment.
Sorry, I didn't catch the first part. Did you say just a public comment or an item as well?
Oh, no, no, no. Just public.
Okay, you have a minute. Please, please go ahead, Speaker.
So I'd also like to speak to what a caller earlier said about the amendments. And yesterday, I heard about Herb Wesson and how he, you know, made the Kobe, you know, memorial and everything, and, you know, obviously, that's a great thing, and we can make public statements about different things. Something I'd like to see more is, you know, the council to bring more awareness to attacking the root of the system, attacking poverty, making that a main goal, to eliminate that because many, many of the crimes, they stem from poverty. And if we can focus on that, if we can focus on, you know, what's going on with the prisons with the mass incarceration, again, the 13th Amendment, you know, just being public... you know, just being public about defending the least of us, I feel like we can create a better Los Angeles. We can create a better nation, you know. So I'd like to see if, you know, the council-
Thank you, Speaker.
Could they commit to amending that?
Thanks, Speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yeah, hi, Daniel Gus. I'd like to speak on 23, 24, 26, 29, 30, and general public comment.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Gus. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
Great, thank you. And just for identification purposes, I am the same gadfly journalist who sued City Council last year, won $11,000, did not receive an apology, and I am nominated for an LA Press Club Award this Saturday. Just as a context for the following comments. Item number 23 says, "Jobs that have a legal status requirement," well, "employment council members" is a federal issue, not a municipal one. All jobs have a legal status requirement, whether it's citizenship or other papers. If the city of LA is looking to skirt federal law as an employer, it is inviting both civil and criminal consequences. Furthermore, when you give or attempt to give employment to people who are not federally qualified for employment, you are also hurting lower-income people, and that means especially black and brown people here, and who do have a right to work, and you are hurting the poorest people in Los Angeles when you try to skirt federal employment laws. That's item 23. Item 24 reads, "Creating a program that would provide a pathway to citizenship through city jobs." Well, once again, you do not have oversight of citizenship. Citizenship is a federal issue, not a municipal one. You have no authority on this subject. I sympathize with the intent, but this is none of City Hall's business. Number 26, Juneteenth. This is a very, very important and good thing, and I wholeheartedly support making Juneteenth a city legal holiday. But a caveat, if you decide that one ethnic group deserves a legal holiday, but others do not, it is discrimination, and you're inviting a lawsuit from every other identity group. Identity politics rears its ugly head here. It is a good idea to make Juneteenth highly recognized. I knew little about this a couple of years ago, and you should consider the consequences from doing this, discriminating against all other groups. Item number 29, it says, "Lift the ban on the taxation of grocery items." Why would you ever want to tax grocery items under any circumstances, let alone a pandemic? You're looking to make it possible to tax grocery items. That's a bad idea. It also may be inconsistent with federal laws. And item 30, "Fair Trade Day," this is another social justice initiative by the city of Los Angeles. Remember when you had the social justice idea of boycotting Arizona? You boycott Arizona until it was no longer convenient to boycott Arizona. Do you remember the social justice initiative you had to ban plastic bags? What happened to that? Go to any supermarket now. They're not only giving away plastic bags, they're giving away super-thick plastic bags. So fair trade is a very good idea, but I fear that it's another thing where the politicians are seeking to-
So please go on to your general public, Mr. Gus.
Go ahead.
General public.
Okay, great. You got it. So I made my point on that. Council members, I have a new column this morning in City Watch LA called "LAPD Shell Game: A Crime in Progress." This LAPD is refusing to give me computer-assisted dispatch records, and we all know what it's about. I'm not asking for a police report. I'm not asking for body camera footage. I'm trying to find out where a few of your officers were on a few days, a year or two ago. Why, you should ask yourself, is the LAPD refusing to turn over those records? And I'm telling you, if this goes on any further, I will pick up the phone and I will call the FBI, and I will tell them what I know, which is more than what I put in my public records request. You are doing a dance with the potential for a massive scandal that will be right up there with Rodney King. It will be right up there with the Watts riots. It'll be right up there with your Rampart scandal and all of the other things that have gone wrong in City Hall over the generations. I'm telling you.
Thank you, Mr. Gus.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, this is Mimi. I'd like to give general public comment, please.
Sure, you have a minute. Please go ahead.
I'm not sure if you saw, but the LAPD aggressively countered a nonviolent protest last night. The most anybody did was throw a water bottle, and the cops shot tear gas and rubber bullets at them. This is how the cops react to nonviolence, with violence. You guys need to do something about the cops fast. You've surely seen what's happened in other cities. You need to defund the police immediately. We cannot wait for more people to die. And if you don't do anything, more people will die. And more people will die if you don't cancel rents as well. I'm demanding that you guys do your jobs. You sit here, you vote on things, and you take our taxpayer money and the cops' money. You say that you can't do anything, but you could use your power and position to put pressure on those who can. What's the problem? I'm giving a general comment.
I was like, this is really bad. Right, because you know, you've gone on there.
Okay, give it back up. What's happening?
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Ah, hey, Buscarini. This is Sabrina Johnson. I would like to speak on items 10, 26, 21, and general public comment.
Sure, you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
Great. Item number 10, Dulce. Congrats. It's great. Great job. Item number 26, "Making Juneteenth a local holiday." Surely, this will solve racism. Obviously, we don't need to defund the police because we have figured it out. Making Juneteenth, making Juneteenth a holiday will absolutely end racism in Los Angeles. No problem. Nobody look at the LAPD. Keep moving. Okay, item 21, REEP. I told you guys I was going to call in and do this every time, so here we go. When a rental property is deemed unsafe to inhabit, and this is for the people listening at home, the city can take over control of the property temporarily via the rent escrow account program. When this happens, tenants stop paying rent to the landlord and begin paying half of their normal rent to the city instead. That money goes into an escrow account until there's enough to make the necessary repairs to the property. Once that is done, a property can be removed from the program, and tenants go back to paying their full rent to the landlord. So, when the city council is discussing removing properties from REEP, when they're agendizing that, we are looking at two things happening. Number one, the rent is about to double for everybody living in these properties during a pandemic. And number two, instead of agendizing any renter protections at all, or any eviction moratoriums to protect people from being thrown out of their homes and onto the streets in the middle of a pandemic, LA City Council is prioritizing handing control of these properties back over to the most egregious slum lords in Los Angeles. Y'all, what the fuck? Why do you keep agendizing this shit, this shit, and refusing to take any time or devote any time during your meetings to renter protections? Why have we stopped talking about renter protections? Do you know how many people are about to become homeless? Yes, you do, because almost everybody that calls in to these committee meetings and council meetings tells you. Several hundreds of thousands of families, like 360,000 individuals, are likely to become homeless if you don't cancel the fucking rent. Okay? Half of the fucking city is on rent strike because we can't pay, because we're not getting any fucking unemployment, because the fucking system is broken. Somebody needs to help us, and you guys keep kicking the can down the road, saying, "Oh, we should make a resolution to ask the federal government for help," or "Ask the state government for help." Fuck that. You guys have the power, and you're refusing to do it because it's not fucking politically convenient for you, because if you actually take any action to help renters, you'll lose all the money from your donors, from your fucking development companies.
Please go on to your general public comment, Speaker.
Great. Yeah, my general public comment is the same. Cancel the goddamn rent. Defund the police. Cancel the rent. Enact the people's budget. And suck my dick and choke on it. I yield my time. Fuck you.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, yes, this is Richie, Sunrise Movement LA and People's City Council. I wanted to speak on item 22, 26, and general public comment, please.
Great. So you have two minutes for the items and then one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
Great, yeah. Item 22, about the COVID emergency, you know, Mike Bonin, this Bonin motion from four months ago, yet we've seen no report back. You know, on May 6th, it was, you know, you all approved Bonin's motion to, for an immediate report back on what hotels have received public money and why they aren't participating in Project Room Key. It's been almost four months, yet we've seen no report back. The city promised 15,000 rooms through Project Room Key, and only 4,000 of them have been occupied. So like Sabrina Johnson says, we, like, you guys aren't even discussing renter protection, but like, the things that you have attempted, like, the minor attempt that you have done to help people throughout this crisis, you can't even fill 15,000 rooms. That's how incompetent and inept you are. And then you approved the report back on May 6th, and you still don't, and I haven't seen it yet. None of us have seen it yet. And so I just like, what, I wonder, do you question your own competence? Because we are generally interested in whether the city has, you know, actually paid for those 15,000 rooms, and whether you have any interest in filling those 15,000 rooms, 9,000 more rooms than you have now. It's August. This report, this motion was from May, and so it's August now, and there's no report back, and you all have 9,000 more rooms to fill in Project Room Key. So, I mean, I hope you're really proud of your public service and your public duty, because you're doing a really awful job, and you all are bad at your jobs. Item 26, you know, about making Juneteenth a holiday in Los Angeles. I mean, I think that is a good idea, but racism and systematic racism shows itself in many ways.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, Rob Quan. I'd like to speak on item 22 and general public comment.
Sure. So you have a minute for, I think you said one item, and then a minute for general public comment.
Yep. Item 22 has to deal with the emergency COVID response and emergency declaration, and I think it's just fascinating to see the situation we find ourselves in. You know, I saw Herb Wesson repeatedly calling out Sacramento for our bungled reopening. Well, you know, that's actually on the mayor. That's on you. You have 40% of LA County in this city. You got yourselves outworked by, you know, Cameron Smythe and Santa Clarita City Council, which is absolutely fucking pathetic. You know, yesterday, we saw the CAO dancing around any answer about estimated revenue shortfalls. I think it's really absurd that we haven't gotten any kind of estimate update since, what, June? Apparently, that's just fine. We'll wait until September, maybe, to hear a little bit. As Richie said, Project Room Key, this is absolutely disgusting. We're looking at ramping down Project Room Key this fall, even though we haven't reached a third of our goals.
Thank you, Speaker. You can go on to your general.
The motion you pulled together to look at who's getting city money and whether or not they're complying or volunteering rooms, you haven't even brought that back. The call was for that report to come back immediately, and it's been almost four months. Moving on, this council and its treatment of general public comment is pathetic. As I mentioned before, you know, San Francisco's supervisors, their budget committee, had 12 hours of public comment yesterday. They've had 15,000 minutes of public comment on this issue, and if you took that in LA City with their 30-minute limit, that would take three and a half years for us to get the amount of public comment they've had on that one issue in the last few months. Lastly, you've got a lot of hot mics there, and they are going unacknowledged. Somebody asked during their comment, "What's going on?" And they just got abruptly shut off without, you know, Pablo apologizing on behalf of the council members, disrespectful enough that they're not even going to mute themselves before they have their back channel conversations. This is why we need a Brady Bunch screen, so we can watch all of you in gallery mode and see that you're actually not paying attention. Thank you.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, I'd like to speak on item 30, 32, and general public comment.
Sure. So you have two minutes for the items and then one minute for general public comment. Please begin, Speaker.
Thank you. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
So with regards to item 30, we live in the city that is the wage theft capital of the world, so I don't see how we could be a fair trade city when the trade that we put out isn't fair at all. I looked at the five designations that the city has to undergo to be a fair trade city, and they're all bullshit marketing schemes. They don't actually require the city to be a fair trade city in effect, just on paper, just for you guys to pat yourselves on the back, which is the best, you know, that's the only thing you guys are good at. So it's no surprise that you guys are doing that. But I would encourage you guys to actually tackle the wage theft issue in the city of Montgomery, workers, restaurant workers, and many other workers before you guys even consider calling yourselves a fair trade city and doing all the stupid bullshit PR that you guys do when you guys do something stupid like this that's useless. Just, you know, take stock of what's really happening on the ground of more bullshit like this. With regards to item 32, it's weird that the Koreatown Community, Youth Community Center, is cleaning up after rich people in Larchmont. I mean, I know that they're getting paid, but it's just weird that an organization devoted to, you know, at-risk youth in Koreatown is going over to fucking Larchmont to clean up after rich people. Fucking weird. So moving on to general public comment. All of you dumb motherfuckers are useless. All of you guys need to be voted out or recalled, and I don't really feel like what y'all hate you on a topic at you guys today because of this. I'd like to encourage everybody, to vote every single one of you out, not fall for stupid bullshit from people like Mike Bonin or David Ryu, because every single one of you is liberal rights, white supremacists, useless piece of shit, even fucking Herb Wesson and Karen Price. I will be very sad the first time that LAPD ends up fucking killing somebody on Kobe Bryant Boulevard, because you fucking cowards are only good at PR instead of helping the people of the city. We need to cancel rent. We need to defund the police. We need to abolish the police. We need to adopt the people's budget. All of you dumb motherfuckers on city council, on the fucking police commission, and the mayor living on Skid Row until you learn how to help homeless people and fix Project Room Key, and we need to cancel the Olympics. Fuck every single one of you. Fuck all of you. I hope you all die in pain.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hello?
Yes, please state your name. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yes, my name is David Ewing, and it's item 34.
Sure, you have a minute. Please go ahead.
Thank you. I'm encouraging you to vote yes on item 34, which is 245, the Venice Place Hotel mixed-use project. The West Area Planning Commission hearing was a misfire. It was a bare quorum of three for the most complex and largest mixed-use project in Venice history. Excuse me. One of the commissioners made it clear that she's made her decision before the hearing. One raised many questions and objections, but was steamrolled by the chair. Please, please, 245 this project. Thank you. There are many, there are numerous unresolved legal and planning issues that were not dealt with in the hearing, even though they were raised.
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Hi, I'd like to speak on item 26 and public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and then a minute for general public comment. Please go ahead.
So, okay, so I'm not here to disparage any of you or insult any of you, I'm here to assist and help and, you know, give us, you know, some guidance and added resources to get to some of the things that we want to, you know, that we aspire to become as a city. With item 26 regarding Juneteenth, while it is a great symbolic gesture, I believe that we can all understand at this point, we are past the point of symbolic gesture. And what we are looking for is actionable items that can begin to create generational and structural change within this country, and it starts with the root of this country and how it was founded on and what it was founded on, which is slavery. We've seen it now with the fires that's going on, how we're having inmate labor right now, they're paying, they're getting paid $5 a day to go fight fires, and a lot of them aren't able to go ahead and work in these departments that they are working under cheap labor for, and that's something that we deemed acceptable, you know? And so when it comes to the symbolism, I can't...
You can go on your general.
...I can't connect the two with the action and the symbol, you know? I'll move on to my public comment side of it. So, again, at the root of everything that we're facing today, neither slavery nor indentured servitude shall exist within the United States except as punishment, as a crime. What we should be trying to do is eliminate the environment that creates crime to happen. What we should be trying to do is prevent these environments. I'm not, when we talk about police, when we talk about defunding and reallocating, we're talking about protecting their lives because we're even throwing police lives into the danger of the byproduct of systemic racism. They get a bad rap, they get, you know, they don't, they aren't able to come home to their families, because we're throwing them at an issue that's a lot bigger than them. So I'd like the council to publicly support amending the 13th Amendment. That's the root of the issues, and I think once we attack, we attack that, all the systems that uphold systemic...
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name's Lindsay, I'd like to make a general public comment.
You have a minute, please go ahead.
So first of all, you want me to stop cutting off callers, stop talking over us, and actually listen to the public that you're not even pretending to care about. You need to cancel rent, cancel rent, and cancel rent, just because, just in case you all forgot, we are in a pandemic, people have lost their jobs, people are not getting their unemployment money, so how dare you expect them to pay rent? In what world does that even make a little bit of sense? I'm no city council member, but I would try to help the people who pay me to help them, just an idea. And also, you need to defend the police, defend the police, stop looking the other way when cops respond to nonviolence with violence, and do your fucking jobs. We've been calling in for months demanding this, the LLLA told you how, and instead you dare co-opt their language of reimagining public safety. Do your fucking jobs, defend the police, cancel rent, and yield your time.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
This is Robin, item 34.
You have a minute, please go ahead.
I want to thank you all for your very hard work in these incredibly challenging times. I'd like to support my councilman Bonin's motion for you to assert jurisdiction on the proposed Venice Place Hotel project. The project would have a huge adverse impact on the lives of the adjacent neighborhoods, the residents of Oakwood, a historically African-American community that's been and continues to be vitiated by gentrification. That's unacceptable. This project spans eight lots and uses a definition of mixed use that provides only three of 82 units as real housing in order to justify a 50% increase in FAR. That's wrong. The Area Planning Commission hearing was sorely inadequate for a number of reasons. The EIR does not adequately analyze and mitigate the project's impact as required. And last but not least, the majority of residents in the adjacent neighborhoods aren't even aware of the project, so further public engagement is obviously required, as noted by our councilmen. Please support our community and approve the motion to proceed with the City Charter Section 245 review for the project.
Thank you, Speaker.
Again, thank you for your hard work.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
My name's Margaret Loyd, I'd like to speak on item 34 and public comment.
Sure, you have one minute for each.
I'm asking you to please support the 245 motion proposed by Councilman Bonin for Plumb to reconsider the Abbot Kinney Hotel appeal. This proposal encompassing an entire city block directly across from a 100-year-old elementary school would be horrendous for children and families and for the adjacent historic Black Oakwood residential community. These significant impacts were not appropriately considered in the appeal hearing. One planner went on record and said that there is no nearby historical district. Well, she hasn't read Survey LA. In its failings, it does identify the Oakwood Residential Planning District. The hearing was really skewed, it was very unfair that it was three out of five commissioners, and driven by the agenda of the commission president, who happens to be a land use lawyer. So for all of the reasons that are reasonable, please support the 245 motion, take this to Plumb. Thank you. Now I want to make public comment. Judicial Rule 1 is set to end on September 1st, I'm asking you to work with the governor and extend Judicial Rule 1 and pass AB 1436, where we are going to see an avalanche of evictions. And I think you all know the circumstances, emergency unemployment has ended, people haven't worked, people have been unable to pay rent. LA is unable to cope with the homeless situation as it stands, we don't need hundreds of thousands of evictions. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
Okay, members, that concludes public comment for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, let's prepare to vote on several items. Do you want to go ahead and state what those are?
Thank you, Madam President. And for the record, a technical correction needs to be made on item 21C. The correct address is 2325 West 25th Street instead of 2323. And then the items available to be voted on are items 2 through 9, 21 through 25, and 31 through 35.
Okay, please call the roll.
Bloomingfield. Councilmember Bloomingfield. Bonin.
Members, can you hear us? We're not hearing you. Maybe you need to unmute yourself, but let me double-check with ITA. Hold on for just a second, Madam Clerk. Mr. Bloomingfield, can you hear us? Doesn't appear like he can hear us. Let's try this one more time.
We're issues with audio.
Just call the roll. Go ahead, Madam Clerk, start with Mr. Bloomingfield.
I'm having issues with audio myself.
Okay, I thought it was only me.
Okay, thank you. There we go.
He's having trouble hearing.
Monsieur President.
I had horrible ones, I signed off and came back on, and now I can hear you all fine.
Okay, we can hear you now, thank you, let's go ahead and call the roll.
And again, these are for items 2 through 9, 21 through 25, and 31 through 35. Councilmember Bloomingfield.
No, the clerk, I can't hear.
Yeah, the issues seem to be coming from the chamber.
Yeah, I couldn't hear the public speakers.
Right.
Okay, can you hear us? Thumbs up, can you hear us?
There's public speakers, and she couldn't hear the clerk.
They cannot hear, okay, they can't hear us. Give me just a minute, members.
We still can't hear, it seems to be an audio issue from the chamber.
Testing, members, can you hear this?
Still no volume.
We will take a short recess to figure this out.
You're unreadable.
Every bad connection.
Every bad connection.
...
Okay, members, can you hear me now? Great, I want to apologize to the members of the public who have been listening to our meeting. We had some technical difficulties with the audio system, but it looks like we're all back on. So, Madam Clerk, why don't you go ahead and restate the items we're ready to vote on?
The items that council will be voting on at this time are items two through nine, twenty-one through twenty-five, and thirty-one through thirty-five.
Go ahead and call the roll.
Councilmember Blumenfield. Blumenfield?
You couldn't hear me. Can you hear me now? Blumenfield, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Puskaino.
Aye.
Sadiel. Sadiel.
Sadiel, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretz.
Aye.
Kerkorian.
Aye.
Lee. Councilmember Lee. Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price. Councilmember Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
And back to Councilmember Lee.
President.
Sir, we need you to vote, um...
Aye or no?
Sorry, I apologize, Madam President. I just joined on. Which items?
Can you repeat the items for Mr. Lee, please?
Two through nine, twenty-one through twenty-five, and thirty-one through thirty-five.
Aye.
Thank you. Fourteen ayes, these items are adopted.
Okay, let's move on to item twenty-nine. Please call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Puskaino.
Aye.
Sadiel.
Sadiel, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretz.
Aye.
Kerkorian.
Aye.
Lee.
No.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell. Councilmember O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, one no, this item is adopted.
Okay, let's move on to item fifteen. This was called special by Mr. Sadiel.
Madam Chair, yes, I just want to bring this to the attention of the council and thank you for your support. This is simply about addressing specific needs in my district, and I'm sure all of you in your districts where people are struggling with the many challenges of COVID, its impact on the economy. At that level, even any help, like in this instance, the opportunity to provide free longevity services is really critical and key and can be helpful. And so, we've been doing this for the homeless community, but we want to expand this for the low-income residents of my district. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and open the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Puskaino.
Aye.
Sadiel.
Sadiel, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretz. Councilmember Corretz.
Aye.
Kerkorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Fourteen ayes, this item is adopted.
Okay, let's move on to item number twenty. Please call the roll.
And this is on the motion moved by Harris Dawson and seconded by Mr. Puskaino. Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Puskaino.
Aye.
Sadiel.
Sadiel, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretz.
Aye.
Kerkorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Fourteen ayes, this matter is adopted.
Okay, let's move on to item twenty-six, called special by Mr. Price.
Members, please join me in initiating the process of making Juneteenth a legal holiday here in the city of Los Angeles. Some of you may recall, Juneteenth is the oldest nationally celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery in the U.S. dating back to June nineteen eighteen sixty-five. In light of recent protests that demand racial equity and injustice within the country, in response to the unarmed killings of Black Americans at the hands of police, like those of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and countless other Black Americans, including Jacob Blake, shot in the back multiple times by the sheriff in Kenosha County, all these events have heightened the call to commemorate, celebrate, and acknowledge the historical significance of Juneteenth. For myself and nearly half a million Black Angelitos that call L.A. home, we understand its significance, and we recognize the value and the cultural impact of Juneteenth has on all culture. Now, I didn't learn about Juneteenth formally in school, but rather through word of mouth or interacting with friends and family and popular media. This is a moment to honor our ancestors who were subjected to harsh and inhumane treatment, as they were forced to perform backbreaking labor, deprived of an education, and were subjected to countless acts of violence against them. Many of us today, for many of us today, we're still bound by change in some form of political, economic, health, social, and social disparities. This is a teaching moment, members, one to raise awareness and share our values and traditions with the world. Let's continue to raise awareness by moving this motion forward and making Juneteenth a city legal holiday. So our grandchildren and our grandchildren's grandchildren will continue to learn about the significance of Juneteenth. I ask for your aye vote, and I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on item twenty-six.
Councilmember Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Puskaino.
Aye.
Sadiel.
Sadiel, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretz.
Aye.
Kerkorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Fourteen ayes, this matter is adopted.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and vote on item twenty-seven as amended. Please call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Puskaino.
Aye.
Sadiel.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretz.
Yes.
Kerkorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, this matter is adopted as amended.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's go ahead and move on to item twenty-eight. This was called special by Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Madam President, and I want to, Mr. Corretz is joining me in flagging this item just because of the sensitive nature of this. So it's the motion for regarding a cooperative agreement with the United States Department of the Interior, our National Park Service, for services related to the Juan Bautista de Anza Trail Grant. Now, this grant is a relatively small grant for the Urban Design Studio, which is a proposal for $27,000 to further the Los Angeles City Council's certification of the trail through some of the following objectives as outlined in the report. It's all about connectivity of the Los Angeles River and the communities from a historical context, identifying historically significant portions of the historic trail along the LA River bicycle and pedestrian pathways, in consultation with the National Park Service, for commemorative signage. The reason it's sensitive is that Juan Bautista de Anza was a colonist on behalf of Spain who helped pave the way for three of the California missions within the mission system that is largely responsible for the great genocide of indigenous and Native American communities that existed for thousands of years in California before first contact. So, I just want to flag this for the purposes of this reckoning we're having in terms of the honorifics and monument conversation, not just locally now, but nationwide. And when it comes time to actually dealing with the improvements and moving forward, we really need to consider how as a city, as a county, as a state, as a nation, but mainly what our role will be in providing restorative justice for the indigenous community that was here long before any of us were, especially as it relates to naming trails, you know, schools, parks, state parks, local city parks, after historical figures that are seen as partially responsible for incredible harm to local indigenous communities. So, that's why I wanted to flag this. I think it's something we can support, but it's a conversation for another day on this item twenty-eight. And so, we'll put a pin in this to continue the conversation, but we need to really understand the importance of not allowing these slip by without the acknowledgement that we still have a lot to deal with in terms of justice, historical justice, racial justice, et cetera, as it relates to all historically marginalized and discriminated against communities, and of course, the Native American indigenous communities here as well. So I just wanted to put that out there and flag it for future conversation. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Madam Clerk, go ahead and vote on item twenty-eight. Please call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Puskaino.
Aye.
Sadiel.
Sadiel, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretz.
Aye.
Kerkorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price. Councilmember Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, this matter is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to item number thirty. This was called special by Mr. Corretz.
Thank you, Madam President and colleagues. This is one that sort of got lost in the COVID shuffle, but even though we missed this year's second Saturday in May, the fair trade folks would like us, very much like us, to move this forward anyway. Together with councilmembers Rue and Kerkorian, we've been working hard on our purchasing policies lately, among others, revamping the environmentally preferable products purchasing program and moving away from any Brazilian items due to the intentional and insane wildfires still being set to destroy the Amazon Rainforest. And this one, today, I'm bringing forward with councilmembers Bonin and Puskaino about establishing fair trade purchasing policies and becoming a fair trade city. The core principles of fair trade ensure fair labor practices, healthy and safe work environments, fair prices, worker empowerment, community investment, environmentally sustainable practices and products, and they protect children and women from trafficking and slavery and allow those who produce the goods we consume to live and work in more dignified conditions. And given the chaos that's been going on in 2020 and the celebration of the hundredth anniversary of women's suffrage, I think this is the exact right moment to bring forward this great vision of ensuring a more sane, more just, and more fair purchasing policy. And I want to thank Alicia Chan and Fair Trade L.A. for bringing this to us and look forward to celebrating with the entire fair trade organization next May in 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Corretz. Let's go ahead and prepare to vote on item number thirty. Please call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Puskaino.
Aye.
Sadiel.
Sadiel, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretz.
Aye.
Kerkorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, this matter is adopted.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move on to verbal motions. How many do you have this morning?
We are aware of four verbal motions.
Okay, let's start with the first one.
The first motion has been introduced by Councilmember Lee to be referred to the Energy Climate Change and Environmental Justice Committee. This moves to instruct the Department of Water and Power to immediately report to council on the causes of the recent outages, the actions taken to address the power outages, and the causes for delay in restoring power. And a seconder?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blumenfield, next.
Thank you. The next verbal motion has been co-introduced by Councilmember Rue and Councilmember Corretz, and this is to be referred to the Public Works and Gang Reduction Committee. This instructs the Streets L.A. and the CAO to report on the status of fiscal year 2020, 21 median maintenance funding and perform services, as well as the steps that can be taken to avoid negative impacts of deferred maintenance. And a seconder?
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Blumenfield seconds, next.
Thank you.
Next is a verbal motion.
Next is a verbal motion introduced by Councilmember Rue and referred to the Transportation Committee relative to the Chief Legislative Analyst, Department of Transportation, Bureau of Engineering, with the assistance of the Bureau of Street Services, Department of Building and Safety, Department of City Planning, and City Attorney as needed, to report on the feasibility of developing a permanent alfresco program that allows for a streamlined outdoor dining permit process.
Seconded, right?
Second.
Oh, that's Joe.
Second by Mr. Buscaino. Next?
Next is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Rodriguez, referred to the Rules Elections Intergovernmental Relations Committee relative to including in the state's 2019-20 legislative program support for SB eight-nineteen, the California Consumer Financial Protection Law, which would increase protections for consumers and small businesses from predatory financial practices by creating a new Department of Financial Protection and Innovation. Is there a second to this resolution?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blumenfeld. Is that it, Madam Clerk?
Yes, that is all, Madam President.
Okay, members, do you have any verbal motions? Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Madam President. Happy to partner with Mr. O'Farrell on this. As, uh, the seconder, I move that the LA County Department of Public Health be requested to report with recommendations for the outdoor operation of breweries in the city of Los Angeles in compliance with the statewide public health order dated July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, relative to preventing the spread of COVID-nineteen. Confirming my second.
Okay, confirming, Mr. O'Farrell's gonna second that. Any others, Mr. Buscaino?
Yes, yes, Madam President. Um, we'll, um, it's bittersweet to, um, move forward on this resolution honoring Sergeant Catherine Plous of the LAPD Harbor area, uh, the officer in charge of the Community Relations Office, and she was my direct report for the seven or eight years I was a senior lead here in Harbor area. She will be truly missed. We did, done a great work together. When we talk about reimagining public safety, she's been reimagining the role of, uh, law enforcement in our Harbor area communities for decades. So with that, Sergeant Plous, we honor you. Uh, we wish you the best as you retire from the LAPD over thirty years of service. Um, her retirement is on September first, two thousand and twenty. So, there, let it be resolved that by the adoption of this resolution, the LA City Council does hereby commend and thank Sergeant Two Catherine Plous for her thirty-two years of service to the LAPD and commends her for her commitment to duty and professionalism in serving the people of the city of Los Angeles. Best wishes, uh, are extended for long, happy, and rewarding retirement. We also look forward to tomorrow's drive-by procession honoring Sergeant Plous in front of the LAPD Harbor Police Station. Sergeant Plous, we love you. Thank you for your service to our city. You will be missed.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Blumenfeld, thank you.
That's it.
Any others, mister? Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm, today I'm introducing a resolution to honor a legend of Council District Twelve for, um, our Executive Director of the North Valley YMCA, Jane Stanton, who's been our Executive Director for thirty-three years. And the ru, resolution says, "Now therefore be it resolved that by adoption of this resolution, the city of Los Angeles and the Twelfth Council District express our deepest gratitude to our friend Jane Stanton for her devoted service to our community and wish her well in all her future endeavors."
You have more?
Second.
At one o'clock, yes, thank you.
And I, I believe, uh, Councilmember, uh, Monica Rodriguez and Buscaino are seconding.
Ms. Rodriguez, a second. Thank you. Any others, Mr. Lee?
No, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, so, uh, my moving clause is now therefore be it resolved that with concurrence of the mayor, that by the adoption of this resolution, the city of Los Angeles hereby includes in its 2019-2020 state legislative program support for the five-bill California Farm Worker COVID-nineteen Relief Package, which will protect farm workers and avoid disruptions in our food supply.
Second.
Second by Mr. Coretts. Any others, Ms. Rodriguez?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Madam President, and, uh, first I want to give a big thank you to, uh, the men and women of DWP and LAFD and Streets L.A. for their great and quick, round-the-clock work at the latest Sunset Boulevard, uh, water main rupture and for having, uh, everything cleared and ready to go, uh, uh, for traffic on Monday. Um, my moving clause is, I therefore move that the Department of Water and Power be requested to report as soon as possible to the council regarding the latest Sunset Boulevard slash UCLA water main break that occurred on August twenty-third, two thousand and twenty, and specifically include current status of the water main rupture and what caused it to occur, operational history of the water main, and whether it had any prior physical integrity issues. The DWP's water infrastructure program and what if the ruptured water main was scheduled for repair slash upgrades, steps the DWP has taken to minimize water main ruptures slash leaks and their impact on the public and property, including new technologies that can help identify water system physical integrity issues prior to ruptures, uh, the status of the DWP's long-term water infrastructure, and efforts to replace aging water system components and improve system reliability, including a review slash assessment of a more rapid pace of system replacement.
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Farrell, did you second that? Yes, he did. Mr. Coretts, any others?
Uh, no others. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, seeing no other verbal motions, Madam Clerk, what's next?
Council's motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred members, are there any announcements? Seeing none, I'm gonna go to Mr. Wesson for an adjourning motion.
Thank you, uh, Madam President and members. Last Wednesday, I received a call from a dear personal friend of mine, Heather Hutt, who's the State Director for, uh, Senator Kamala Harris, and she informed me of the passing of former Assembly, uh, member Gwen Moore. So today, uh, I, Marquise Harris Dawson, and Karen Price will be adjourning in Gwen's memory. When you think about her, we could literally talk about her for hours. But I just want to quickly, uh, try to quickly share with you, and, and, and Marquise, maybe you in particular. When I first met her, it had to be one of the most exciting times in Black politics in this region of the city. My former boss was in Congress, Yvonne Burke, and she decided to run for Attorney General, creating a cascade effect that, uh, Assembly Member Julian Dixon decided to run for Congress for Yvonne's seat. Uh, God rest his soul, Councilman David Cunningham ran. Uh, my former boss, Nate Holden ran. So when Nate ran, he had to give up his Senate seat. Julian gave up his Assembly seat, which created another opening where we had, God rest his soul, Willis Edwards, and Elvin Moon, and Marguerite Archie Hudson, and Diane Watson came from the school board to run for state senate, which would lead to Rita Walters running to the school board. There was something going on positive in the Black community every day. There were fundraisers called Chappie's Cheepies that you'd go to, cost five bucks. Then you'd spend five bucks and you'd get either a Golden Bird Chicken Dinner or a barbecue dinner. Uh, a drink was two bucks, and beer or wine was a buck. That was the most exciting time always. And there was this young, um, community college, uh, board member named Gwen Moore, who was also in the mix to run for the California State Assembly. I met her and one of her best friends and Chief, Chief of Staff, Joy Atkinson. I met them both. I believe it won a Chappie's Cheepies. Gwen ultimately won this hotly contested Assembly race at a time when there was, they, people would reference machines, the Bradley machine and the Han machine. Well, this was the Berman Waxen, Waxman machine, and, and the quarterback of that team was Howard Berman's brother, Michael. And he performed a masterful campaign, which saw Gwen get elected. She became very close with Speaker Brown and wound up chairing the Utilities and Commerce Committee, uh, in the State Assembly, where she literally became an expert, one of the most knowledgeable, uh, elected officials, not just in California, but in this country. Uh, came up with landmark legislation that ensured that individuals of color would receive, um, access to contracts on, on a variety of things that were related to the utilities. In nineteen ninety-four, she decided to run for Secretary of State and, uh, ran of, uh, a hard, uh, campaign. Unfortunately, she did not win. But that didn't stop Gwen. It didn't set her back because shortly thereafter, she took that expertise that she had gained, uh, at the state of California and became one of the most sought-after consultants, uh, pertaining to those matters in this country. That was my very first entree into California politics. That exciting time changed my life, and I'm probably here today just based on everything that was going on at that point in time. Heather, who called me from, uh, Senator Harris's office, indicated that she had just spoken to Gwen a few days, uh, prior to that. And as we have chatted amongst friends, no one knew she was ill. We don't believe that she was ill. So she was able to live her life from beginning to end with force and power. And, uh, in fact, Heather said the last conversation she had with Gwen, Gwen was chewing her out over something, and it, and if you gotta go, that's the way to go. She was my personal friend, and in all of the years, I don't think I ever met one person that had anything negative to say about Gwen at all. She was well-liked, she was funny, she was feisty, she was effective, and her word was her bond. She will be missed. But it was people like Bradley and Diemily and Diane Watson and Nate Holden and Julian Dixon and, of course, Gwen Moore, that opened the doors for people like Karen Price, Marquise, and myself. I want to, uh, say to the family, we thank them for allowing her to serve us. And for me, it was always a pleasure to program with elected officials that were shorter than me. She was, and there's only a handful of them. So I, uh, will, uh, uh, miss her, and, um, she's just reminiscent of one of the greatest Renaissance periods, uh, in politics for Black elected officials in this great region.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to, uh, co-sign everything, uh, Herb just said about, uh, about Gwen. She was really a force, uh, force of nature. Um, you know, I got to know of her, uh, of her real history and, and real, um, influence when I served in Sacramento. And of course, uh, being active and involved in, uh, procurement, minority business, small business. Uh, her activity with the PUC, Public Utilities Commission, uh, really set the tone for, uh, making companies, big and small, be more accountable. Uh, and, uh, and they still have, uh, the hearings once a year to talk about the performance of the, uh, of the utilities in, uh, in contracting and procurement as it relates to women and minority, um, businesses. But she was also just a real, um, real mentor, a real mentor and friend. Uh, at, when Karen was the Speaker, uh, she was a close confidant to, to Karen. Karen relied upon her, actually, uh, quite a bit. Uh, as a former member of the legislature and, and then in the private sector, uh, she was able to, uh, to work both worlds, uh, and she did so effectively as a, as an advocate, um, for her clients, uh, and as an advocate for African-Americans uh, to achieve power and exercise that power, uh, especially in the state government, but not only in the state government, certainly at the local level and the federal. So, she will be missed. She, uh, her consulting firm was GEM, G-E-M, and, uh, will be remembered, uh, for all of the work that she did, not, uh, just in the political world, but in, as a community activist, a community resource, uh, and a community conduit. She really made things better, and, uh, as Herb pointed out during those golden, uh, years of African-American political involvement, uh, she certainly had a place at that table uh, and continues to be a source of inspiration to all of us, uh, in public office. So I'm, I'm happy to join, uh, join Herb in this recognition. Thank you.
Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, uh, thank you, uh, Councilman Price, and, uh, especially you, Councilmember Wesson, for all those great stories. Uh, you bring me up some of the great history that we have. You know, we're, I'm over here Googling Chappie's Cheepies, uh, to see if there are any photos from those, uh, those parties. Those are, uh, that's, that's great history. You, you know, I met Gwen Moore later in life, um, you know, when I think she had hit her full stride politically. I remember, uh, Karen Bass was still running Community Coalition. She decided to run for State Assembly, and we set up a little campaign office. And these, you know, women come into the office, older women, like a, like a street gang. They came in and they said, you know, we, we need a place to sit, and where's Karen? And so, you know, I got her together, and I got her, the tables together, and they sat down, and, you know, it was, it was Joy Atkinson and, and Betty Jo McKinney and Gwen Moore. And they said, "We're gonna..." And they said, "We're going to put you in the Assembly. We decided you're the person who's going to go to the Assembly." And, you know, Karen kind of said, "Okay, you know, what do you want me to do?" And they said, "First, you got to win the Democratic Party endorsement." Now, mind you, Karen had never been to a Democratic Party meeting in her life. Didn't know where they were, who was in them, what happened to them or anything. And they, you know, they gave her a list. "Call this person and say that. Call, go over here and do this, and go over there and do that." And Karen followed instructions, and we followed instructions. And Karen sailed to victory in her Assembly race and became Speaker where we became very close to Gwen. That was the moment, Councilman Price and Wesson, where Gwen got my cell phone number. So, you know, from that point on, it's on. You know, every few weeks, like, "Marquise, you need to do this. Marquise, call this person about that." I don't know how many times I'd be going into, you know, I'd be in the car outside, preparing to have a meeting with somebody, like John Mack or Danny Bakewell or somebody. And, you know, I'd be like, "Okay, Gwen, I got it. I'm going to do it. I need to go, you know, I need to go in this meeting. I got to hang up." And by the time I get in the meeting, into the office that I'm going to meet with, the person says, "Hold on, I'm on the phone with Gwen Moore. I got to just wrap this up real quick." Because she was such a, such a whirlwind. I'm appreciative of Senator Moore for this reason. There's an adage in the African-American community that says, "No matter who you are and where you are, you're a freedom fighter. And you got to be fighting for our freedom, no matter what role you play." And Gwen Moore was somebody who did that up until her very, very last day. No matter where she was stationed, she could be a consultant for a big organization. She could be a member of the Democratic Party. She could be a community activist. But she was always fighting to push, to push the cause forward. And, and that's an example that, that certainly I hope to live by, but I think is an example that, that lots of people can look up to from, you know, those of us who are in elected office, to those folks who are out in the streets with Black Lives Matter, to those folks who are working in a corporation, trying to make it more fair for people of color and, and women. So truly appreciate Gwen Moore and, and honored to join the adjournment in her honor.
Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson. Mr. Sadio?
Madam Chair, thank you so much. I just want to add my voice to the chorus of praise for Sister Gwen Moore. We were friends. I met her on this campaign, the same campaign where I met Herb Wesson. Diane Watson was running for county supervisor. I could not persuade my union to do a dual endorsement, as Herb had advised me. And as such, we were involved in this very intense campaign. Very, very intense. And my local, local 660 had made this their Die on the Hill campaign. So I got to know Diane Watson and Gwen Moore and Marguerite Hudson and a whole range of the African-American leadership during that time period. And I got to meet Gwen. And Gwen, as we all know, statesy obvious, was a very elegant woman. Just very stylish, very elegant, dressed to the nines at every and all occasion. And I obviously appreciated that about her. And then I was able to go to Sacramento after that and get really close to Gwen. She was really close to Richard Polanco, Senator Polanco. We spent a lot of time together, working in utilities. And so Gwen and I, my brother-in-law, we got to travel to New York for a very huge conference. We just had a wonderful time. We spent a lot of time together. And she was always very fond of my brother-in-law because he's, he's a leader in public safety. And she came out of the probation unit and, you know, out of the county workforce. So we had our own special bond and just really loved seeing each other. We had a wonderful time in New York. It was back in the day when they would have these huge conferences around K-ball and utilities. And she was a leader in that field. And we had, just had a really great time. Had a wonderful lunch one afternoon. And just spent a long afternoon talking about life and politics and the sacrifices and commitments that are required and how important it is to maintain our relationships, our friendships, and our commitment to our family. She's just a wonderful woman. And I just think it's important to note that not only was she a leader in the African-American community, but her leadership was also with the Latino community and its leaders. I know Polanco and Martha Scutia and Art Torres. All, so many others, Richard Alatorre, all were enamored with her as well. And so I just think it's important to note that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sadio. Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. And I just, I want to join the chorus here in celebrating the memory of Gwen Moore. I, you know, I had a, I don't have quite the history that some of my respected elders on the council may have with respect to her contributions. I, I got to know the contributions of Gwen Moore post her official public service duties. I, I got to know her when I was serving on the Board of Public Works and around supply chain diversity, helping to expand opportunities for women and minority-owned businesses. And had the distinct honor of being awarded by her at the MS, SM, SM and SDC Conference for that work. And she's, you know, we, as Herb Wes, as Herb mentioned, you know, she was a petite woman. But we stand on the shoulders of this giant who has done such, made extensive contributions that not just benefited the African-American community, but certainly the Latino community has also benefited from her leadership and her example, particularly women. I think, you know, it transcends all colors of our community, the work that she did and the leadership that she exuded. She was very inclusive. She had a mentor mentality. And I'm, I know I'm particularly grateful for having the opportunity to have worked and, and to have gotten to know her. But her public service didn't cease in retirement from the legislature. It continued, and we are all beneficiaries of it. So, you know, may she rest in peace. She was an incredible leader and one who exemplified what it means to continue to give of yourself and expand opportunities for others. And her generosity will be felt for generations. And it's sad that she's not here to even be part of the effort with Prop 16 and the efforts to repeal 209. But in her memory, I hope that we will all rise up to fulfill that correction of the, of that wrong part of California history in her memory. So I'd like to join the chorus here on, on just celebrating her life and my, my condolences to her family and friends. And we are all better for her life, well-lived. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. I'm going to ask you if we can include all members on this adjournment. I will say, Mr. Wesson, I just saw her at the beginning of the month. Gwen and I were both, we both participated in Rita, Rita Walters' memorial service. And she was one of the speakers. And she did such a beautiful job speaking about our good friend Rita Walters. And so I heard it through you that she had passed away. So my condolences go out to her family. She was an amazing trailblazer for women and women in politics. And so may she rest in peace. Thank you very much. That was beautiful, members. Any other adjournment motions? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.